Welcome, everyone. This is the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board for Monday, November 15th, 2021. We are in the governor's room of the St. Peter Community Center. I will call the meeting to order and we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right. Is there a motion to consider and adopt the agenda?
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. If anyone wishes to speak to an agenda item tonight, they can fill out a card and give it to Sarah. I don't believe we have any cards yet, but if anyone would like to speak to an agenda item, they can do that. I want to welcome Representative Susan Ackland for a legislative update and a few minutes for us just to converse about the upcoming legislative session. So Representative Ackland, if you want to join us up here, that would be great.
Hello.
Hello.
Ready?
Yeah.
So it's good to be here tonight. We were in session until the end of June this year, so I haven't had a lot of opportunity to hit all of the board meetings and the commissioner meetings and township meetings, et cetera. So my purpose really in being here tonight is to just meet you, say hello, introduce myself, and basically thank you for the job that you've done and that you are doing. It's been a very difficult two years, and I thank you for doing the best that you can to keep our students safe and keep them in school so that we have the best learning possible for our students. So my role in the legislature did not include the Committee on Education, so I'm not an expert in that area that I'm learning. And by being at these meetings, I learned really what our communities need as far as the legislation goes. So I'm here to listen and to invite you to contact me at any point to get, put your input into what you feel like we need as a state legislature to make your jobs, so you can do your jobs the best we can. I know everybody's probably very excited and happy and relieved that the levy passed so that we can continue with the high level of education that I think the St. Peter students have. So thank you for that, for the citizens of this town, that they saw the value in that. We did do some good legislation this year in the House. We passed a four-and-a-half percent increase in education, and that was, you know, that was big. Things are all probably, all costs are going up, and we need to stay up with that as far as maintaining our level of what we provide and offer for our students. And I will say this, that I read as people were running for office and congratulations to the new, to the new school board members that'll be taking office in January, but as I read through what each one stood for, it's like, you know what? I think we can all agree, we all stand for those things. We, sometimes we bury significantly or maybe even a little on how we're going to get there, but our students are our prime, primary concern, and we want to give them the best education possible to prepare them for the future. And so as I looked at all the different, and whether the person actually won the election or not, I felt like they made some really good points. And one was to narrow our achievement gaps. That was, even as I first started getting into politics a little bit, that was concerning to me that we had these achievement gaps, and I think we will do a good job in starting to narrow that. Another issue that is primarily, I would say maybe my number-one issue, is the mental health of our students. So I am here to say that along those lines, I don't think we can do too much. I personally have a family member that struggled tremendously, to the point of needing help. And I don't want to in any way embarrass her or reveal something that I shouldn't, but I know firsthand what it's like to have these issues. So we need to do what we can to keep our students safe and mentally healthy. And the last thing, I like some of the programs St. Peter has on preparing our students for the workforce when they're finished, keep up the good work in that area. I think that's going to be critical going forward for making sure that we have the labor force that we need and also just providing students with the opportunities that they personally see is important to them. And that can look anywhere from a college education or college degree to a two-year program to just on the work training, whatever it means for that student, let's make that possible for them so that they can move forward when they're graduating, know a direction that they want to take, and take it with confidence. So thank you again to each one of you who worked to keep our students safe, to keep them well-educated. St. Peter has a beautiful facility, so we are far ahead, I think, from many communities in that area. So I'm here to support you in any way that I can. I just need to hear from you. If there's an issue, please call me directly or call my office, and we'll get back to you. Do you have any particular questions at this point?
Well, again, thank you so much for coming, and I agree. I think we can all agree on those things, and, you know, I appreciate the kind words. Your job has been difficult, too, and we're all looking forward to moving ahead and working on the work instead of reacting to a disease.
Right.
So thank you, but I'll defer to Superintendent Gronseth, and I know Treasurer Carlson has been on our legislative committee in the past, so anyone that has questions for Representative Ackland, I'd speak up.
I have a que, they're gonna do a special session soon, is that correct?
So we have a need for a special session, and that need has to do with provide, with giving out this $250 million to frontline workers. The legislature, as you can well imagine, Minnesota is the only legislature in the nation that has a divided House and Senate. So we have a Democratic, a Democrat House and a Republican Senate, and this creates a lot of problems. So we're trying to, right now they're at an impasse on who deserves or who needs or who gets this $250 million. I won't go into the details of that, but we needed to go back into special session in order for the legislature to approve that money. They have not come to an agreement yet, and so the governor has said until we reach an agreement, there's no reason to have a special session. So we have not been called back yet. I was hoping it would come soon, but...
Yeah, me too.
Any other questions on that issue?
No. The only other thing that kind of caught my eye, I was reading something this morning about the, and I have no idea about where you were this past year, but there was a lot of per diem taken from, for, from House and Senate members that were at home and doing everything by Zoom. Has there been any talk about how to kind of rectify that? I mean, it's not a good, it doesn't look good, you know, in the public, and I don't know if you've heard stuff about this, but I read something this morning that the total's a lot higher than it probably should be.
So I'll make a comment about this. It was, as a first-year legislator, very difficult because I would go to the State Office Building, I left every Sunday evening and went to the, up to St. Paul, and, because I usually had early Monday morning meetings, and I stayed all week in the hotel until either, usually Friday, sometimes Thursday night, sometimes Saturday, depending on committee meetings. Sometimes I would be the only one in the office. I wouldn't see three people the whole day because so many people were staying at home. It made it, it made it difficult. It made it difficult for me because there's no one around for me to talk to or to ask questions of or to learn from. But beside the point is, I don't know about the per diem because I was just working from the State Office Building.
Right.
And so, so I didn't really use that. There's certain rules around the per diem, so I don't know how that, I think that, I mean, as long as they're following within the rules, that's, you know, that's the way it is, but COVID has presented a lot of issues.
Right.
And I'm so disappointed because now they've already determined that we will not be able to have visitors in the State Office Building, so no one next year will be able to be in. And so I expect that most of these, that many of the legislators will stay at home and do all their meetings on Zoom, which is disappointing, too.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily have a problem if they stay home, I just have a problem if they stay home and take the per diem.
Yeah, I, I don't know how they would do, do that exactly.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't take very much per diem.
Yeah. Thank you.
In fact, in fact, I, my, I can, I can claim mileage, but it's such a problem to even figure that out and write it down and send it in, that sometimes that doesn't even happen.
Well, and, and to be fair, you're using your per diem because you're up there, you know, and so I wouldn't, however much you used of your per diem, it doesn't bother me. I just was curious, it caught my eye this morning when I was reading something, and that was something that, that was kind of odd, so. And I had heard that you were going up to the State Office, I wouldn't have asked the question if, it wasn't a gotcha question, it was, it was the opposite side of that.
And that's why I don't know about how the per diem's being taken because I haven't been involved in that.
Right.
But you know what? I have found one thing, I understand why it costs so much money to run the government because there is a lot of money that, that goes out.
Yeah.
I've been surprised.
I just wanted to thank you for the opportunities we've had to, to chat, both just you and I, and with different, different groups that I'm involved with, with MASA and MREA, and I just appreciate that you're always available to us and that you're approachable, and we know that if, if we want you to know something, that you're willing to listen, and if, if we need to know something, you're willing to, to share that. So thank you.
Yes, and along those lines, I, I have coworkers that I've gotten to know in the Education Department who are excellent. I mean, they, they are excellent and great resources for me, so what I don't know, I can reach out to them, and they're very, very, very good. I really appreciate them a lot.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and you know, we have a unique situation here in your district where the Minnesota School Boards Association is headquartered here, and we'll be headed to the state conference here in January, and it's always nice to, to go there and see other school board members from around the state, view them as, as a resource and just really rely on them for information, and I certainly take a bit of pride knowing that they're in my hometown, and I think you should, too, for your district. So that's another great resource that we have here in St. Peter, along with our colleges and, and other districts, too, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Ackland. We will move ahead to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda is in your packet. We don't normally read it, but if there are items that we would like to pull out or ask questions about, we have an opportunity to do so.
Chair Leonard, the books are in order, so.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Carlson. I guess I would just like to point out, I don't need to pull it out separately, but item number four, which is a $465 donation to the district in memory of Tom Whitty. So thank you to all of those of you who contributed to that donation, and we sincerely appreciate it.
I just want to thank foremember Carlson for always reviewing the bills at the district office. I think that's something that I always feel really good about when you do that because I know you know what you're looking for, so I appreciate, I know you've done that for a long time, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tracy. Yeah. I pass it on to whoever. One out of every four.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director Stewie.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Student Spotlight, welcome.
Come on, guys. Just close to you, I'll share this one, okay? All right, well, I am so excited to introduce you to a couple of Star students from South Elementary, and I have to say, both of these individuals were nominated by more than one staff member. I put out an alcall and say, who comes to mind when you think about students who demonstrate what Star Pride is all about? So I have with me Ella Mohler and Jackson Holkey. And Ella is a kindergartner in Mrs. Hartfield's kindergarten room, and Jackson is a first-grader in Mrs. Eiler, and Mrs. Wilker was there for a little while, wasn't she? First-grade classroom. And you have some guests with you tonight, don't you? Ella, your mom and dad are sitting there, and it's Nick and Nicole Mohler. Will you tell us who else you have here tonight? Who else is here?
Bama and Papa and Nana.
Bama, Papa, and Nana are all here, along with who else? Your brother, and your brother Max, and he paved the way for you at South, didn't he? And how about you, Jackson? Jackson is the son of Heidi and Kyle Holkey, and who else do you have here?
My brother Zach Holkey.
And again, both of them have siblings who paved the way for him at South, so. And I used to tell Jackson that he was one of the dynamic John Dear Green duo because last year they would get out of the loop and they would have on these orange, or yellow and green coats every day in the winter, didn't show. They were my John Dear team. I would like to read a statement that one of the teachers wrote about Ella. "In the classroom, Ella consistently shows her Star Pride. She is an enthusiastic learner who always puts forth her best effort. Ella is thoughtful and kind to all of her classmates. She has a positive attitude, a great sense of humor, and is always willing to try new things." Does that sound like you? And here's Jackson's statement. "Jackson is a very hard-working student who shows a great, who shows great enthusiasm for learning in our first-grade classroom. He is polite, kind, respectful, and encouraging to his peers and the staff around the building. He takes his time in his schoolwork and he gives it his all. He loves to be a helper in the classroom and he can always be counted on for showing Star Pride." I am so very proud of him. So, well done. I had the opportunity this morning to visit with them just a little bit, and I asked, one of the things that I asked him was, what was one of their favorite, what's their favorite thing to do at school? Ella, do you remember what you said? You said it was at recess. You really liked recess. What do you like to do at recess?
I like to play with my friends.
Play with your friends, all right. And, yes, do you remember what you said?
No.
Lunch. So what's your favorite?
Orange chicken.
Orange chicken, so it's on the menu a couple times a month, isn't it? So it is a fan favorite there. We also talked about some of the things that they like to do at school, and Ella really likes IXL, and you like to help with Otto. You better tell him who Otto is, though.
Our class pet, our fish.
It's a fish. So how often do you get to feed him?
Um, once a month.
Just once a month, he gets his turn, so Otto gets some food every day, though.
I get to feed him tomorrow.
Tomorrow's your day, oh my goodness.
Nice.
Come by and you can check on Otto.
What kind of fish is Otto?
A goldfish.
Awesome. And Mrs. Wilker, who was there until MEA, was so excited, she had, she knew what she needed to do with the kids, but she was really worried about keeping the fish alive until Mrs. Eiler came back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but she did it. The job was done. Ella, what would you like to be when you grow up?
A veterinarian.
Ah, she said she really likes pets. What's your favorite animal?
I forgot.
Do you have one at home? Do you, what do you have at home?
I think it's a giraffe pet, but my mom has it.
Your mom has a pet giraffe. Okay, cool. And what would you like to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
A teacher, listen to that. I'm gonna talk him into becoming a principal, though, I think. Start as a teacher. And outside of school, Ella told me that she likes to go to the ice cream shop.
Nice.
What's your favorite flavor?
Chocolate.
All right, and you told me you like to go to the mall.
Yes.
And where do you like to go at the mall?
Barnes &amp; Noble.
Barnes &amp; Noble, he's on his way to be a teacher, I could tell. So thank you both for representing South, you do a fantastic job, and I told you, they're all super nice. I was right, wasn't I? Do you have any questions for them?
Mrs. Holkey stole all my good questions I was gonna ask, so I'll just ask something simple. Do you like summer or winter better?
Summer.
Summer? What do you like better, Ella?
Summer.
Summer? There you go. I like fall, which I object, but I'd probably have to go with summer, too. You guys are some pretty fun kids, though, so thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
They were in preschool together.
Those two are in preschool together, they need you to...
Oh, nice.
Well, must have been a wonderful class, Mrs. Prackey. All right.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Thank you, Ella, thank you, Jackson. Thank you, families. I like to say to the Spotlight families, you are welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you're not required, so we understand.
Thanks for making me follow that act.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Principal Ingeldinger, which do you prefer, summer or winter?
Oh, winter for sure, because we can't be in school in the summer.
Good answer.
Right, everybody?
That was it.
Wow.
Uh huh.
Are you, are you here for our first action item of the evening, which is the consideration of approval of a resolution supporting the district's application for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation?
Yes, I am. I'm here in Shay Rorcasse's place. We have a girls' hockey game tonight that he has to be at, so he could speak to this probably much more eloquently than I, as can board member Carlson, but every year, I believe, it's a resolution to approve a grant from the Minnesota State High School League that eventually will help, help us support those kids whose families have a hard time affording participation in our Minnesota State High School League activities.
How many years in a row have we applied for this?
Oh.
A lot.
A lot, a lot, yeah.
As long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably well before that, too. We talked about it at the co-curricular committee, and it was recommended to the board for passage.
Excellent.
Do all schools apply for this?
Yep.
From my free money, I mean, what am I missing here?
No, that's exactly it.
The amount we get depends on the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch.
All the better reasons to fill out those applications.
That's where I was headed.
It always comes back to that, doesn't it? So...
Need a motion to pass the resolution?
I'll make a motion to move, is it, is this a resolution? Is that what it is? Yeah, so I, do I move the resolution? Is that what I say? That's what I would like to do.
Second. We have a motion and a second. The resolution is on page 25 of the board packet. It's short, so I can read it. "Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the governing board of the St. Peter High School recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine art programs, therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the St. Peter High School, St. Peter School District, supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees." Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the resolution. Director Hager.
Aye.
Treasurer Carlson.
Aye.
Director Stewie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Loughlin's card.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to action item number two, which is, "Consider Approval of the Compulsory Attendance Report."
That's right, it's that time of year again, and each year, we are required to provide this report to the state, and it makes for some very interesting reading for us as well. It's something that we like to, to keep track of, and that is the number of families who are choosing to homeschool and go to private or parochial schools. And you can see on pages 28 and 29, the details of that report. 28, you can see the number of homeschool students is slightly lower than last year. Last year, there were 188 families who were homeschooling, and this year, 178. That is up from generally what's been stable is about 120 families, so, you know, about 50 or 60 families more in the past two years have homeschooled with, with everything going on with COVID. And then when we look at private and parochial schools, those have remained pretty steady. There's a couple of sites, John Ireland and the St. Peter Lutheran School, that have had considerable increases last year and, and this year as well, and the others have stayed pretty stable. Generally, you know, that 100 and, oh, I'm sorry, I said 120 in homeschool, it's not 120 in homeschool, it's how many opt-out total, not homeschool. Homeschool is 27, not 127. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We forgive you.
So, yeah, there are 27, and there's a total of 178 that opt out of the district. This does not include students who are opting into other public schools. So if they're going to Cleveland or Mankato, they wouldn't be included on this report, but we do track that as well, as much as we can.
Thank you, Superintendent Gronson. Any questions?
So, just so I'm reading this right, so there are 170, I just, there's 178 students that have either open and enrolled or are homeschooled in this school year, is that right? Is that what this?
Right.
Okay. So last year, we had 188, and this year, we had 178.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that's what I was looking at, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the 10-year totals are on the, on the bottom there, so it goes from 2012 all the way up to 2022. So you can see, it's, it was around the 150, 160, it came down to about 120, and then the last two years has gone back up to the 180, last year, 178 this year.
What is that, why I suppose you wouldn't have that, I was like, how does that work in terms of percentage of students, but I suppose you don't have that all memorized for back to 1213 or anything, like you... Like, you could whip those out real quick?
No. Not quite.
Are we about twenty-two hundred students, though?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're the math guy.
Wow, look at that.
Yeah. Nailed it.
And then, the, the other piece of this whole story is how many kids have come into the district from other districts and go out to other districts, because it's kind of a, goes both ways. Any other questions?
No, anyone want to make a motion?
I move to consider approval of the compulsory, compulsory attendance report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the compulsory attendance report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item three, uh, action item number three, consider approval of the World's Best Workforce Report for the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, and we did have a, a meeting, uh, the World's Best Workforce Committee, uh, met, uh, late last week, and I was in attendance with that, and we went through the full report, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Carlson.
All right. This is another annual report that we are required to provide to the state by December fifteenth of each year. And it has a lot of information that we have talked about in other meetings. So, uh, we went over the assessment data. Um, I think that was in October, we had that in our meeting. And so, this isn't unfamiliar data for you. It's just in a form that we need to provide to the state each year. Has the five areas of World's Best Workforce, ready for kindergarten, uh, reading well by grade three, closing the achievement gap, uh, college and career ready, and our four-year on-time graduation rates. And so, it includes goals for each of those areas, our progress towards those goals. And we have a meeting each year with the district advisory committee, as required by statutes, and go over these and gather feedback as we build a plan for the coming year. Is there anything that I missed, Principal Ingeldinger?
No, excellent.
Very good.
The World's Best Workforce. Um, I, I guess I would just, um, draw your attention to a couple of additions that we haven't had in this report in the past. Um, we are, if you look on page nine, I believe the pages are the same, uh, there's an addition, uh, the Indian Education Grant Goals and Progress we reported on. Um, that's a, um, part of our district that we, we met the, we met a minimum number of students who would identify, um, as indigenous. And so, Mr. Graff heads up, um, what we refer to as Ningpak. Um, and so, the goals are reported on, on page nine. Um, another addition that we haven't had other years is our Achievement and Integration Goals and Progress. Um, and that's a, that's something that we, I believe that last year was our second year that we qualified, um, as an ANI district. And that means that we are a racially isolated district. Um, and, and we've qualified for those dollars because of our proximity to Mankato. Um, I believe last year we also qualified on our own as well, but we already had a, had the partnership going with our area districts of JWP and Mankato Public Schools. So, those are reported on in here as well. Um, I would also, I would also add that many of our, of our goals will kind of remain, they'll, they'll remain similar with numbers changing from year to year. Uh, but, but look for changes in the spring. I think on, um, that career and college readiness goal, we've kept it, um, because it has to be something measurable, we've kept that goal, uh, at, with the, within the ACT, which really only measures, uh, your readiness for college. And so, we have, we've put a lot of time and resources into, um, our career and technical education areas and those, uh, job experience opportunities that our kids have now, especially with the, with the, um, we keep calling it new, with the new high school, um, and those, the areas that we have for kids to do some more career exploration. Look for some additional goals in the, in that area. Um, whether that's, you know, um, number of, of industry certifications that, that kids earn while they're in high school, um, you know, number of job shadowing opportunities that kids take advantage of, something along those lines. Um, but we'll be getting feedback from that, that advisory committee. Otherwise.
Thank you.
I would say that, you know, the goals, the goals remain, you know, it always feels uncomfortable having a graduate, a four-year graduation rate goal of anything less than a hundred percent, um, but it has to be attainable. Uh, so, that changes slightly year to year based on last year's four-year graduation rate.
But if you look at the graduation rates on page fourteen, um, in twenty-twenty, we were at ninety-one point two percent, and the state is at eighty-three point eight percent. So, I think that is a, even though our, we aspire to a hundred percent, um, that is, that reflects well of our district. Um, just because I was at the committee meeting, and I, I think there are things in here that we're not happy about. Um, it wasn't all rosy. Um, I think it's really difficult with the last two years to look at test scores or look at, uh, some student achievement and compare those, uh, as apples to apples with twenty-eighteen. Uh, but, uh, our test scores, uh, took a, took a hit, as they did across the state. Um, but those aren't where we would like them to be in the future. Uh, so we want to keep working on that, and we deem to do better narrowing the achievement gap. Um, but I think one of the things that doesn't show up in this, in these statistics maybe, is that St. Peter is a full participation district. Uh, we encourage everybody to take the ACT. We encourage everyone to take tests. And there are other districts that don't do that. And so, the percentages of, uh, folks that are, um, you know, in other districts taking those might be, those statistics might be different than a district like St. Peter, where you've got more full participation. And I think that shows up in the graduation rate. We have full participation, uh, not a hundred percent, but almost a hundred percent, um, in our graduation rate. So, the other thing that I thought was, uh, was pretty cool and is something that continues to, to grow, and I'm, I'm proud of, uh, as a parent and as a district member. Uh, but on page eleven, it talked about four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in tuition, uh, that St. Peter High School students earned while in high school. That's for a district this size. Uh, when you think about the graduation, graduating class in twenty-twenty was a hundred and eighty? Something like that? Uh, divide that by four hundred and seventy-three thousand. That's real money to households in St. Peter. And the less debt those kids graduate with, uh, the more, the, the, the more things they'll be able to choose from, um, without having to do things, uh, the more ability they'll have to buy a house, or buy a car, or, um, take a job where they want to live in a field they want to be in. Um, that is, uh, as, as the father of high school students, that is life-changing, and I, uh, I sincerely appreciate that.
That also speaks to the level of education and, and qualifications that our high school teachers have as well. Yet, that takes a certain level of masters, either plus eighteen credits in your content area, or a master's in your content area in order to be qualified to actually offer those classes. So, we have been able to successfully recruit and maintain and retain those teachers who are really top-notch.
Excellent point. Thank you.
I have a question, not even so much about the World's Best Workforce, but it is in here, and I know there's always been some discussion. I'm just not on that committee, but are we looking at all of what our, um, requirements are for graduation as opposed to the state? I mean, do we have like an update on that, or is it just still kind of in the?
We are, uh, we are in conversations about that, especially with the Instructional Program Committee meeting. Um, if you, you're correct, we have a significantly higher number of graduation requirements, uh, than, than most districts, um, and certainly significantly higher than the state, which can make it difficult for a lot of students, um, to either have those opportunities to take those exploratory classes if they're busy making up their, um, credit deficiencies, or... And we also have a very robust ALC to help kids, um, recover those credits as well.
Well, yeah, and for anybody who watches us back, I'm not saying that I want us to like not expect greatness from our students. I just, you know, we have all these great electives, and then you sit with your child, and they're like, "Well, I can never take welding, 'cause I gotta take, you know, all these math." And, you know, that's all important, but if you're not going to be an accountant, then maybe you don't need that fourth year math. Maybe you do. I don't know. I feel like I'm gonna get beat up about this, but... I'm just all about the options for kids.
I, I think you're dead on, and, and we talked about that in the World's Best Workforce Committee, and I think we'll continue to look at that across, across our committees and our, and our board and our administrations.
Yes, you can expect to hear on that topic, um, in the near future.
Yeah, it was introduced at, in instructional programs a couple months ago, a few months ago.
A couple times.
Yeah, and, uh, um, just being able to compare against other districts that are well-regarded as well. You know, I think part of, I think the thought maybe in the past was that, you know, we, we pledged to offer a rigorous, you know, education, and, um, but maybe we can do it in a different way. So, I thought, I thought the principals that brought it up did it very tactfully and kind of said, "Hey, something you might want to think about." And so, I, I'm sure it will come back to instructional programs soon, so...
Well, and you know, when, having a kid and you look at that course catalog, I mean, our teachers up at the high school, I mean, all our teachers are awesome, but they put a lot of work into brainstorming up some really creative classes. And obviously, there's only so many cla, those classes that can happen, so...
Yep.
It's good for our employees to be able to, you know, be motivated and stay fresh if they can actually do those classes, and for our students to be able to take them, so...
Right.
That's my two sons.
Thank you. With some initial discussion, anyone want to offer a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce Report?
I move to approve the World's Best Workforce Report for twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last action item for the evening, uh, consideration, uh, for the approval of a master agreement with paraprofessional educators for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three term, so a two-year contract.
Yes, uh, the negotiations committee met with the paraprofessional unit a few times and worked through, um, proposals and came to a tentative agreement that was within the parameters set by the, by the committee. Um, we do see a market rate adjustment in salary for our paraprofessionals, and the, the starting wage, um, would be fifteen dollars an hour. So, we're, we're happy to be able to provide that, um, for our paraprofessionals. Um, and for others, it's a two-dollar-an-hour increase over what they have currently in the first year, and another twenty-five cents, um, the second year. And then there were some general language, um, changes that were immaterial, um, financially.
Committee members, anything else to add?
No, we're just glad we were able to, uh, come to an agreement and, uh, help raise the starting salary and, well, everybody's salary of our paraprofessionals and the important role that they play in the school district.
Yeah, that's exciting to see. Good job, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And girls, I don't know who's on that committee, but when I say guys, I just mean like y'all.
Gotcha.
Tim and John and Drew, so guys works.
All right, sounds okay.
And I want to thank the paraprofessionals, too, for everything that they do, and, uh, this is, uh, this is more than fair, and this has been a hard job, um, for everyone that works in our district, as Representative Ackland, uh, said earlier, so...
I move that we approve the master agreement with the paraprofessionals for the twenty-one through twenty-three.
I second it.
With a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, I call, uh, the motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. That, uh, concludes our action items. Uh, we have several more agenda items tonight. Uh, our informational item on the agenda is the report on student enrollment.
Um, hi, I think we, you know, in past years, we hadn't really re-given a report every month, but I'm talking with Superintendent Gronseth. We kind of wanted to do that, um, because enrollment is, you know, a little bit different this year than other years. Um, I think we got out probably later today, um, the kind of an update where we are through the beginning of November. Um, we've kind of pretty much, like most years, we've stabilized as, you know, kind of that October first date. A lot of times, the September, you know, with kids coming and going, and, and some not telling us they're going and, and things like that, the numbers tend to jump around. And then usually, October first, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily not change, but it's kind of stabilized, and that's what it's, it's really done. If you look at the report there, we're about at the same level now, um, as we were back on, on ten-four. Um, you know, that, so that, that's good that we stabilized. Unfortunately, you know, we're, we're ways under budget, though, on that. The numbers are down from where we budgeted at our last year. But, um, you know, it's been pretty consistent, um, you know, this last month with the students. You know, we still do get a, a, a fair amount, and I, I think principals will attest to that. You know, if kids that come in and kids that go out, it's just, it just balances out usually, coming and going at this point. So, um, you know, we're continuing to monitor it, and, um, I guess, I don't know if there's any questions. We're just trying to keep you updated on the, on the numbers and where they're at. Um, like I said, the, last month, it was, it was pretty consistent. So, we're still down from, from budget and where we had hoped to be at.
And I do want to mention, as part of this rock bend, um, you can see that we're at twenty-six students. That's kind of, it's our maximum that we can actually fit into our classrooms right now. We do have many students on the waitlist, probably as many as we have enrolled. Um, and we, you know, we are seeing some of those students going to other districts, um, that have been on the waiting list for a rock bend. And so, we continue to look for additional space for rock bend. It's been a challenge. There aren't a lot of properties available that can, that would be suitable, um, but we are continuing to look at alternatives. But, um, you know, that, that is one area that we could see some growth and retain some students that we're losing.
Thank you. I know that you've been turning over every, every single rock that you can, looking for, looking for, uh, space.
Yep.
What, what are the space? I mean, there, I, again, I doubt that anyone watching this movie has a secret, or this movie, this meeting. Uh, if this were a movie, it would be, uh, not successful in the box office, but, uh... I don't, I don't think there's anyone out there sitting on property, but if, and we've talked about it before, but like, what, what space, what kind of building are we looking for?
Well, we, we have looked at a variety of buildings. Um, you know, it's more about the square footage and what we can do with that square footage. We're looking for something between thirty-five hundred and four thousand square feet that we could turn into, um, really four or five classrooms, a couple of offices, and then, uh, kind of a common area where kids could have lunch or, um, kind of have some downtime. And then, of course, we need some records, storage area, and washrooms as well. Kitchen facility would be nice to teach some life skills. Um, but, you know, those, those things don't have to be existing. It's more a space that we could turn into those and have it work effectively and efficiently, and do so within the means of, of the school district. And we've been open to leasing, um, spaces like that as well, perhaps looking for a partner who could build out that space for us, for, for us to lease. So, we're, we're open to, um, a lot of things right now. We're considering, um, a portable building, looking at the feasibility of that and kind of what that would mean long-term or short-term. But we are, we're trying, we're willing to look at everything, so... If it's possible, we'll make it happen. make it happen.
Was it last year that we went from one classroom to two classrooms? Or was that two years ago now?
That was last year, and then we were in the community center. We're in here in this room. And so we had we had a little more space so we could have more students in each room. This year, we we tried to start with 15 per room. And it it was literally you're sidestepping to get through the room. And that was just too many. So now it's down to 13. And it it is still, it's a tight.
Yeah. Well, I just remember when we had that one classroom and then we had 15 on the waitlist and we thought that was bad. Well, then it's like it grew up exponentially.
Yeah. And then we partnered with Cleveland, so we're open to Cleveland students as well. So, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Move on to principal reports.
Principal, we are trying a new format and we decided that there's so oftentimes we're talking about some of the same things, like Veterans Day or students. So we're going to send one representative and the other principals will be here to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm going to let you take one guess on who didn't get to vote on who's going to be the first one to go. Were you late to the meeting? They were all really quick to put their finger on their nose. So here I am.
I see Principal Doherty voted with his feet today.
Yeah. He went to quite an extreme to get out of presenting tonight. So I'm going to start by talking a little bit about conferences. Pre-K through grade eight conferences have been happening over the course of the last three weeks. This year, we offer parents the option of either virtual or in person. We at the elementary level, we had two nights designated for each, but we also accommodated if we couldn't fit everyone in on the night that they wanted. So on our virtual nights, we still had a few people that came in. So our last night of conferences is tomorrow night. Early childhood will be extending theirs into next week. They didn't do all of the exact same dates that we did. But it's been wonderful to get, you know, just to have a chance to to see the parents and talk about some academic pieces, growth that has really already happened in that first quarter. So it feels again like real school is going on. We also celebrated Veterans Day last week. On Thursday, we have all sites recognize Veterans Day in one way or another. At the K-1 level, we had a family activity. We encouraged parents, we provided a template. We encouraged them to write and reach out to either active or veterans that are currently serving or have served and thank them for their service. North collected photos of veterans and they had a slideshow that was going on in their cafeteria throughout the lunch period. At the middle school, there were lessons that were covered in both the seventh and eighth grade advisory periods and also the fifth and sixth grade English periods. And the high school hosted the community event as they usually have done. We have some enrollment pieces that we wanted to just update you on. Early childhood last month, Wendy Teve was here, she talked about the three-year-old numbers for referrals that seemed to be kind of high. And and as they work through some of that process, it looks now like the four-year-old program is now elevating a little bit. So they'll continue to monitor those numbers and make adjustments in the second semester if they need to. The Ashawa Learning Academy has also seen additional enrollments, and in part, this is because of the psychiatric residential treatment facility clients that are now enrolled at the Leo A. Hoffman Center. We have some congratulations to give to some of our students. Shay Hildebrandt has been selected as the St. Peter High School Student of the Month for the month of October. We also have three individuals who will be heading to the state swim and dive competition. We have Laura Clatt, Clatt, who is going to be participating in diving. Hannah Denzer will be participating in the 200 and 500-meter events, and Olivia Denzer will be participating in the 200-meter event. Quinn Rosbach and her team have once again organized, and they've collected clothing, boots, mittens, hats, all kinds of winter wear, and they offer it up to the public free of charge. And it will fill the entire North Gym. And that community event will be held on Friday night. And anyone who is, everyone is is willing to open, it's open to the public, so anyone who is in need may come. And it's also just a great place to come and exchange some sizes. It isn't just out of need. There's some some beautiful clothing that kids have grown out of that we would like to encourage people to come and and use the exchange. So the hours on Friday are from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It is not open on Saturday, but it will be available again on Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And that is in the North Gymnasium. So you'll just enter right at the door, the parking lot door. We also have some rock band students who have done a great job of recovering some credits. They have earned an average of 2.5 credits each during the first quarter, and 35% of those now have a GPA of 3.0 or higher. They also have a waitlist for students, as we already talked about a little bit with the enrollment. We also have 30 high school students who are enrolled in the credit recovery program, and that will be going on from now through the end of winter break or until winter break begins. The elective credit recovery course will begin in January and run in January and February. A couple of other things that we know you're going to want to know about is that the middle school dance was a hit. They had, I think it was Mr. Graff's dance moves. He was able to get about 300 students to attend. So I guess if it's like most middle school dances, no one danced until the last half an hour, but boy, they really rocked it at the end. Nope, they were going the whole time. All right, well, Principal Graff knows how to throw a dance. North will once again be hosting their infamous Turkey Bingo coming up next week. So I don't know if you're familiar with it, but if you get a bingo, you need to gobble and wobble down to the office to collect your prize. So I'm sure that there'll be some video footage following that event as well. And last but not least, we do have the fall musical, Mamma Mia, that will be presented this week. It kicks off on Thursday night and tickets are still available. And I think everyone is looking forward to another wonderful event from the from the high school.
Theater department music.
I should mention that's where Clerk Dixon is tonight. He is playing in the band, so he is at practice.
Okay, wonderful. So, any questions? That's a wrap.
Busy, busy. Everybody sounds busy.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
Thank you.
All right.
I really like the new format.
I do, too.
Yeah, I think, though, we should be able to pick the ones to come up. That way, they don't know who's coming up.
So it's kind of like a pop quiz. They all got to be ready. But you would remember who already did it, right?
Yes.
You would remember who already went.
I was going to say, you did such a nice job, you can you can just reprise your role next time.
We all just secretly put in a vote?
We should have it noted that on Mr. Doherty's nights, there will be several more pages, just so that you know. That's why he didn't get to go first.
I think I think it was decided that whoever had the students spotlight, that that person would be presenting.
Except Jana doesn't do that. So you know what?
She should.
They're they're doing it.
Yeah, we should. We should spotlight them.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Superintendent Gronseth?
It's my turn already. You know, several several of the things I wanted to talk about tonight have been mentioned previously. First and foremost, I want to send a big thank you to the community for supporting the referendum and also to the many community members and staff members that put in a lot of time getting getting information out and sharing information in so many meetings and groups and just about anywhere we could share information. There's either community members or staff members. So thank you to everyone for supporting that referendum. And then I wanted to talk about a not-so-exciting topic and just provide a brief update. I had a meeting today with regional superintendents with the Department of Health and the Department of Education who wanted to give superintendents an update because they are seeing statewide the really the highest COVID numbers that we've had to date. And they are seeing those increases, especially in children, and they're seeing far more cases of children being hospitalized. And so they are reaching out to superintendents to encourage them to continue with COVID protocols and mitigation strategies. Here in St. Peter, we have been, we've been pretty diligent with our mitigation strategies, and we aren't seeing quite as many cases as some other districts. And we're not seeing transmission happening in school very often. That is not the case in many other parts of the state where they are seeing large numbers of school transmission cases. And so we will continue to monitor our own data. Currently, we have 23 cases in our school between students and staff, and we have 53 students and staff with the need to quarantine. So our our numbers are not where we, well, not where we were two weeks ago even. So we just ask people to continue to be diligent, both in school but out in the community, too. I know that, you know, there are many of us who are vaccinated and boosted and yet some people are still still getting it. And so we just have to remain diligent. And our hope is that in December, we'll be able to talk more about a timeline for changing some of our our mitigation strategies. That the vaccinine, vaccinine, the vaccine for five-year-olds and up became available the second week of November. So if we go six weeks out from that, that puts us right around after the holiday break. And so hopefully, hopefully, we'll have a large number of students who are vaccinated and we'll be able to talk about making some some changes soon after that. So the OSHA ETS that came out on November 5th is the President Biden's, I don't know, it's an executive order, that all employers of OSHA standards, of which we are one, would require vaccination of all their employees or have weekly testing. And so we are about two weeks out from implementation date on that. We do not have the details. It is the Department of Department of Labor and Industry that is developing those for the state, and we expect to hear more very soon. There is some litigation that would put an injunction on it if successful, so it could be delayed. But there's also litigation that would require employers of fewer than 100 to be involved. So depending on which way things when things go, we want to be prepared either way. So we are working on the details of how we will be gathering information on vaccinations for all of our employees and how those tests will happen and how we will document the results of those tests, because we know that the orders will have at least those elements. So we've been working on on those details. I also want to mention that we are we are heading into the holiday season. And it is a special time, and we have so many ways that our students share their talents during the season and share themselves during the season, like the like the great North Clothing Closet and concerts and the musical and programs. And it's a special time, but it can also be very challenging for many families and for many students. This can be a very isolating time for many of our students and also for for students who who don't celebrate, who come from different cultures or have different beliefs. And we really strive to be where everyone belongs. And so I am just hopeful that in the coming weeks, that we're all watchful of of our colleagues and our students and our families to make sure that we are providing the support they need to feel safe and welcome and to make sure everyone's healthy during the season. So with that, I am really excited to go and see Mamma Mia. It's the first musical that I've been able to see or show that I've been able to see since I've come here. And I've heard amazing things and so many students and staff involved. And that's all I've been hearing about since they went on sale. Like, did you get your tickets? Did you get them online? Or are you going to get them in person? And they're available both ways. So if you want to buy them online, they're available online. And if you want to show up and buy tickets, I don't think they're sold out yet. Are they?
No, they're not.
Nope? Okay.
Only sold over 2,000.
That's getting close then. All right. So we'll see you at the show. And that is it unless anyone has questions. No?
We'll move on to board members. Director Stewie.
Oh, I'm right away. Well, I want to just go on record as saying that I am looking forward to the COVID mitigation strategies being on the agenda for December. In putting everything else aside, I really do believe that in talking with different people that work at the school and the behaviors we have, and I just can't believe that this doesn't have something to do with how you act out. And so I really feel like we need to look at all mitigation options. You know, the high school, we had that be optional and and the numbers are still very low up at the high school. And I've been told, well, that's because some people are wearing a mask. And I'm like, I get that, but that's kind of the point, is that they had the choice to wear it. So I just look forward to that being on the agenda for December for us to be able to talk about.
Thanks. I don't have anything. Director Hager?
Everything's back.
Um, I have a couple of things. First of all, I wore this blazer tonight in honor of my friend and former school board member, Bob Meeks, who passed away one day after our last meeting, October 19th, after a long battle with pancreatic cancer. And not many people know that Bob was an absolute giant in Minnesota education as a longtime lobbyist for Minnesota School Boards Association and eventually becoming executive director. And I never missed a chance to go to the Capitol with him. It was a history lesson that you'll never get in any book. And it it was it was tough to visit with him back and forth through the time that he was battling this cancer, but he always was upbeat and always asked about the board. And and so, yeah, I miss my friend and I miss him. Well, Tracy's very awesome tonight and everything, but Bob has always sat in that chair.
I know, he's sitting in his chair.
Yep, Bob has always sat in that chair on Monday nights and always in a blazer, never came without a blazer, and offered his special insight, knowledge, and experience to the board that only helped us all become better board members. So I just wanted to give a shout out to him tonight. And on a lighter note, this will be my last regular board meeting. I will be on family vacation next month. So it's truly been an honor to have been a board member in the St. Peter School District for the past 12 years. And I've always admired the hard work and dedication of the teachers and administrators and employees in the district. But my admiration has grown exponentially over the past 12 years. It's been absolutely inspiring to see the lengths that our employees, our teachers, our administrators go to try to give a successful and rewarding experience to every single student. So I'm excited for the new board members. There's a lot of good candidates this year. So I'm, I think this is going to be a good transition, an awesome transition, actually. And I will miss the friendships I've made while being on the board, but.
You can still talk to us.
Yeah, I know. Thanks. Well, I just don't, I don't get to hang out as much. So but and I loved, probably my favorite thing is that. But, and I, I loved, probably my favorite thing is that as board members, there are times where we disagree about different things, but we all know deep down, each person has students' interest, the best students' interest at heart. And so, I just want to thank the district and the voters for allowing me the time I've had on the board. It's been great and I'm forever grateful for the experience, so. But I'm, I'm very happily stepping away as well, so.
Thank you so much, thank you, you've said it wonderfully. I appreciate serving with you and I look forward to you deciding what you want to do on Monday night.
I know.
He's gonna tune in, of course.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings of the school board, we have communications committee on Monday, November 22nd at 4:00 p.m. in the St. Peter Middle School Conference Room. We have a negotiations meeting coming up on November 23rd at 6:00 p.m. in the same middle school conference room. We have a study session on Monday, December 6th at 6:30 p.m. in the St. Peter Middle School Media Center and we have a finance committee on Wednesday, December 15th in, at 2:00 p.m. in the middle school conference room, so. With that, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One more time? Awesome.
I'll do one last.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.